Frank Stevenson.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we just humbly come before you this evening as heirs of this community that we've been elected to serve. And we just ask in favor your provision of discernment and wisdom, Lord. This community, Lord, we just trust in your faithfulness to provide its name and authority. Amen.
Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh here, Marvin Hightower.
Present.
Adam Townsend.
Here.
Larry Knopf Singer.
Here.
Frank Stevenson.
Here.
Glenda Wade.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum.
All right, our first order of business is awards and proclamation. We're going to ask the executive director of the Kentucky League of Cities, who I find to be a dear friend and one exceptional leader for our communities across the state, J.D. Chaney. If you don't mind to step up to the podium, sir.
Oh. You may need to pull the mic down just a little.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate the invitation. Some trepidation by coming into a meeting with you on the dais and in charge of the last word at the microphone, but I am honored to be here. I've got my prepared remarks from staff who told me I could not stray from them in making this presentation. But thank you, members of council and esteemed staff. Every year, the Kentucky League of Cities gives out a couple of awards. I think I was down here last in 2019, I believe, with a big party celebrating Madisonville being the City Government of the Year. We give a City Employee of the Year, a City Official and City Government of the Year Award. I think last year, you got a clerk that was recognized as the Clerk of the Year. And then, well, that was just in April, wasn't it? That was this year.
Yes, sir.
That was this year. So in the same year, by an independent panel of judges with no influence by me whatsoever, I can guarantee, selected your all's mayor, Mayor Kevin Cotton, as the City Official of the Year for 2025. So I'm going to hit these notes, Mayor, about this award, just to hit the highlights. Obviously, there were several applicants, multiple applicants and nominations, not applicants, nominations, for the award. It celebrates not only the achievements of Mayor Cotton while he's been in office here, but also the positive impact he's made on the city of Madisonville itself and the entire Commonwealth. Now, I will tell you, when I get calls from other state league directors about the impact he's making at national conferences and things of that nature, it's pretty impressive. He's rounded up cities from across the state, showcased them nationally at several events throughout the country, and that is a true demonstration of leadership. We want to do, he got this award at the KLC Conference. If you all were at the KLC Conference, it looks like you've put your fingerprints all over it, but we're going to present it again locally. We want to do it locally because we do think it's important that the community recognize what kind of leader they have. We've been doing this since 1999. It's been a way to recognize outstanding work in our cities as well as the people that lead them. Again, an independent panel of judges selected Mayor Cotton for his innovative leadership, hands-on approach, and tireless service to the city of Madisonville, and I will emphasize beyond the boundaries of Madisonville. Twelve separate nominations for Mayor Cotton. That's the most we've ever received for any City Official of the Year. Those nominating Mayor Cotton describe him as a public servant with unwavering dedication and commitment to his city. His peers see him as a humble leader whose focus on growth and success of Madisonville extends far beyond the expectations of the role. Obviously, you all know he's been mayor since 2019 and responsible for many successes here in the city of Madisonville. One example is the new Western Kentucky Police Academy opened earlier this year in Madisonville. Now, I've never seen, 25 years with the Kentucky League of Cities, an individual lobby harder in the halls of Frankfurt along with Chief Bryan for this Western Kentucky Training Center. Never seen anybody work that hard. The thread that runs through everything is a focus on making a positive difference for community and for people. As you all know, this is in the notes, he is many things. Serving in various roles, including business owner, firefighter, fire marshal, EMT, he's our board representative on K-beams. He's a KLC nominee for that and serves in that role. Since 2001, he's been a foster and adoptive parent impacting lives of countless children. He and his wife Donna have fostered more than 50 children. They were honored as the Kentucky Foster Adoptive Family of the Year in 2008. When we gave the award to Mayor Cotton last month, he said the award inspired him to continue fostering collaboration, empowering our dedicated city team, and he gave credit to the entirety of the city staff as a truly shared achievement. Mayor Cotton is a member of the KLC Board of Directors and former member of the KLC Executive Board. It truly is a pleasure to come down here and help honor an accomplished mayor such as Mayor Cotton. As part of the award, KLC will make a $1,000 donation to a local nonprofit, Mayor Cotton's Choice, and he has chosen Breaking Bread, one of your local food assistance programs. So on behalf of the entirety of 408 cities across Kentucky, help me congratulate Mayor Cotton in his receipt of the 2025 City Official of the Year Award.
Cry, or you?
Yeah. I got the same barber, don't you?
And one more thing, since Mayor Cotton skipped his last executive board meeting for a very good cause, by the way. He had to arrange the flower man's logistics, which has been a great thing for the league, and I know this community as well. But he did miss out on getting knowledge for four very great years of input on air, two terms is the maximum. Your term limited on the KLC Executive Board to two consecutive terms. He served four great years on the executive board, and we wanted to honor him for his service with that with a copy of the Athenian Oath. If you've never read the Athenian Oath, it's a pledge that citizens of Athens took about how they take care of their city and how they want to transmit it and leave it in a better place. So this is for Mayor Cotton's four years on the KLC Executive Board. Thank you all for the time.
Thanks for coming, JD. Think you would have a speech now?
Thank you, JD. We truly do appreciate your leadership. We appreciate what you do for cities all across the state. And when we talk with other municipal league directors, they too speak highly of your leadership. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate you and thank you for making the drive down, and thank you for this award.
Congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
All right, our next order of business is a proclamation for Chronic Obstructive Pulmonary Disease Awareness Month. And we do have a few representatives here from Baptist Health Deaconess as well. Whereas the city of Madisonville has long been concerned with the health of its citizens, and whereas chronic lung disease, known collectively as Chronic Obstructive Pulmonary Diseases, COPD, are the fourth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas chronic obstructive pulmonary diseases, COPD, cost the United States economy an estimated $50 billion a year, and nearly 16 million people in the United States have been diagnosed with some form of COPD with a similar number undiagnosed, and whereas awareness, early detection, and treatment are critical in preventing or slowing the spread of lung disease in this country. And whereas the citizens of Madisonville deserve the opportunity to grow, thrive, and be healthy, informed, and aware of their respiratory health and the factors affecting that health, now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin Cotton, Mayor of the city of Madisonville, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Chronic Obstructive Pulmonary Disease Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of Madisonville to help raise awareness about the prevalence and serious implications of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. At this time, we'll have the representatives come forward.
It's my sister-in-law.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a few words. Thank you very much. Ms. Pam May Pray. Next, we have the approval of minutes from October 2025.
The city council meeting was held on October 2025 at 4:30 PM in the city council chambers. It was called to order by Mayor Kevin Cotton. We had the pledge of allegiance and invocation by council member Ms. Glenda Wade. Council members were present except for Mr. Kavanaugh and Larry Knopf Singer, who were both absent for that meeting. We had Kentucky Professional Women's Week proclamation, a Respiratory Care Week proclamation, and an Extra Mile Day proclamation. We approved the minutes of September 15, 2025. Also, approval was of bills and payroll. We had a fire department report and a police department report and a business license report. We had a first reading of an ordinance establishing an energy project assessment district program. Second reading will also be held on November 17, I mean, November 3, I'm sorry, which is tonight. We also have an ordinance amending Chapter 124 of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to mobile food vendors. We had a resolution acceptance of Hudson Park Drive into the city's street system for both maintenance and ownership was approved. We had a resolution directing the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company to redeem on December 1, 2025, the Outstanding City of Madisonville, Kentucky Water and Sewer Refunding Revenue Bonds was approved. We also had a resolution approving a lease for financing of our garbage trucks administered by CAECO was approved, and we had surplus fire items that was approved. Surplus, a city police vehicle was approved. A resolution to surplus the patrol K-9 Drax was approved. A reappointment of Chuck Shockley to the Board of Ethics was approved. Reappointment of Mark Metcalf to the Tree Board was approved. Reappointment of Richard Hain to the Tree Board was approved. An executive order for a reappointment of Steve Durham. And then we had an approval of a sewer service system at 8048 Air Drive. And then we also had a motion to go in closed session was approved, a motion to come out of closed session, and we had an approval to adjourn.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a second. Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have the approval of bills and payroll.
Yes, we have the total general fund of $446,811.67, total sanitation of $156,442.6, total electric utility office of $102,726.08, total water filter of $221,418.1, total wastewater collection and treatment of $638,882.82. We have an estimated biweekly payroll of governmental of $64,216, police of $182,688, fire $185,350, transportation of $33,323.55, cemetery of $3,387, park $22,293, sanitation of $52,059, maintenance garage $8,370, light fund of $102,202, wastewater treatment of $21,084, wastewater collection of $40,715, water and filter of $67,173, for a total estimated biweekly payroll of $782,772.
Do I have a motion to approve the bills and payroll?
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we'll move into the department reports. We'll start with the zoning reports with Ms. Mandy Todd.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have a report for September and October, and I'll start with Septembers. For the month of September, we had two new residential permits, one multifamily permit, three residential additions, six residential accessories, one new commercial, which was Midtown Commons. We had one commercial accessory. We had four commercial alterations for a total of 18 building permits issued. Total construction cost was $4,097,130. We also had various permits for, we had five for demolition. We had two HVAC. We had one conditional use and two historic district approvals, and six new mobile food vendor permits. For a total of 35 permits issued, total fees collected $5,355.16. And for October, we had two new residential permits, one residential addition, three residential accessories, two residential alterations, one new commercial, and one commercial accessory. Total building permit, total construction cost $870,700, total fees charged $1,477.12. We also had three signed permits, one demo permit, two HVAC permits, and one mobile food vendor permit. Total permits for the month of October were 17, and the total fees collected were $2,122.12. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Todd?
Thank you.
All right, next, we'll have council committee reports. We'll start with the Tourism Advisory Board.
Mayor, at the joint meeting of the Tourism City Council Committee and the Tourism Advisory Board, there was one recommendation for funding. That was for the $25,000 for the 2026 Beach Bash event. So I would like to make a motion for $25,000 for the 2026 Beach Bash event.
All right, we have a motion for $25,000 for the Beach Bash event. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the discussion of the Joint Committee Meeting of Utilities, Transportation Engineering, and Budget and Finance.
And jointly, we are committing to the council to consider a ordinance authorizing the repairs that are needed on a stormwater drainage system affecting Lunsford Street and the areas upstream, downstream.
All right, do we have any other discussion from the Utilities, Transportation Engineering? All right, at this time, we'll move into new business. The first order of new business that we have is an ordinance establishing an energy project assessment district program.
This, I'm going to read an ordinance summary that was prepared by our city attorney. KRS Section 62.205 to 65.209, it states that EPAD Act authorizes local governments in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, including cities, to establish programs to advance the conservation and efficient use of energy and water resources within their jurisdictions by allowing for eligible energy projects to be financed by assessments imposed upon the real property being improved through those energy projects. In order to establish an energy project assessment district, the governing body of a local government must adopt an ordinance providing the terms and conditions of the program. This ordinance designates the Madisonville EPAD and its boundaries outlines the administration of the EPAD program and the procedure for the owners of the real estate located within the EPAD to petition the city for participation in the program. This ordinance also designates the Finance Department of the city as the collector of the assessments and authorizes all agreements necessary for the implementation and administration of the EPAD program. This ordinance authorizes the city administrator to engage a third-party administrator for the program if necessary. As companies petition for specific energy projects, these will come back before the city council for approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the establishment of an energy project assessment district program?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Marvin Hightower?
Yes.
Adam Townsend?
Yes.
Larry Knopf Singer?
Yes.
Frank Stevenson?
Yes.
And Glenda Wade?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Next, we have an ordinance amending Chapter 124 of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to the mobile food vendors.
We do have a couple of changes in this ordinance, so those changes are underlined, and it does show in paragraph A that this applies to permits issued on or before January 31. After January 31, the rate will be prorated at $8.33 per month for the remaining months of the year. Right now, they're paying $100 per annual fee. So examples, February through December, you've got 11 months. It'd be $8.33 a month, which would be $91.63. And then the other example shows from September to December for the four months there at $33.32. And that is the only changes. It's just the word, they will be prorated.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 124 of the City of Madisonville Code of Ordinances relating to mobile food vendors?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any questions? Kim, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Misty Kavanaugh?
No.
Marvin Hightower?
Yes.
Adam Townsend?
No.
Larry Knopf Singer?
Yes.
Frank Stevenson?
Yes.
And Glenda Wade?
Yes.